Alright. Recordings in place, the screen is sharing. It is seven oh six PM on Thursday, August twenty second, and I will would love to or I'm honored to officially call us to order for our special meeting. To start off the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five school year. We have the agenda up on screen, so if you don't see it, let me know. Focus of today's meeting is really more so administrative. We want to walk through some of the the nominations and the official voting in of some of our standing committee chairs. Will also go over some general updates from some of our committee heads, including treasurer and volunteer. We'll also highlight some upcoming events because this is the beginning of the school year. And there is something happening every about six or seven minutes, so we like to try to help everybody stay on top of things. Please make sure to use the chat or raise your hand if you have any questions. Sherry and Dominique, if you don't mind helping me keep an eye on the chat just in case I miss anything. And by way of introduction, for those who have not yet met me, Danny Torres, he, him, his, I am the Collins Wood Language Academy PTA president for the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five school year. Welcome to all, welcome to everybody to the meeting, happy to see some familiar faces, happy to see some new names on the list. Now, as far as the first item on the agenda, we typically, we typically review and approve the minutes from the May meeting. Our secretary Lori Hoffer is not here at the moment, so I will pull those up. We're going to move that agenda item to a little bit later. Next agenda item, we need to review the nominations and vote in our standing committee chair nominations. So first up for leading our audit committee, we have Robbie Squibb nominated to lead that committee. Do we have anybody present who wishes to also throw their name into the hat into for consideration to be the committee lead for the audit committee? Hearing none, I would like to make a motion that Robbie Squibb be voted in and approved as the head of the audit committee for two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five.
I second that.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Alright, congratulations Robbie, you are officially voted in as the head of the audit committee for the school year. Next up for nominating committee, we have Bailey Machuca, who has been nominated to lead that committee, this committee for this year. Anybody present who would also like to nominate themselves or nominate somebody else for the role of nominating committee lead? Alright. I would like to go ahead and make a motion that to vote in Bailey as the lead for the nominating committee this year.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Alright, hearing no opposition, Bailey Machuca, congratulations for nominating committee lead for this year. Then last but not least, for our advocacy committee, Ms. Naomi Bautista has been nominated to head up this committee this year. Do we have anybody else present who would like to nominate themselves or nominate somebody else for advocacy advocacy committee lead? Alright, hearing no other nominations, like to propose we vote in and approve Naomi as the advocacy committee lead?
I second.
All in favor of Naomi Bautista being lead of advocacy committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations Naomi for heading up our advocacy committee this year. Now, a couple other Board of Directors positions here, Ruth Medina is, she's not present today unless she has snuck in in the last little bit. Ruth will reprise her role from last year as our PTA teacher and staff liaison. Sherry and I are having some conversations with Principal Modine to see if there are any other teachers or staff members interested in this role. Otherwise, it will be will be Ruth Medina again, but I'll make sure to communicate that once that's finalized. And then for our PTA parent representatives, these are our at-large members of our PTA board. We have three individuals who have been nominated to represent the to be general PTA parent representatives. Elena Marler, Ross Glynn, and Liz Reinfeld. Would anybody else like to nominate themselves or somebody else for the position of PTA parent representative at large? Alright, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we do, we come, we conduct a vote. For Elena Marler as PTA parent representative at large.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed? Hearing no opposition, congratulations Elena for representing the parents at large. Like to now make a motion that we vote on Ross Glynn as being appointed for an at-large parent representative.
I second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed? Hearing no opposition, congratulations Ross Glynn for being for being appointed as an at-large parent representative. And then Ms. Liz Reinfeld would like to motion a vote, or I would like to move that we vote for Liz Reinfeld as an at-large parent representative.
I second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Lisa, have to check, I saw that hand up. We're good?
I was saying aye.
Okay, cool, just making sure. Want to make sure we do this right. Alright, hearing no other opposition, Liz Reinfeld, congratulations as our third and final PTA representative, a parent representative at large. Thank you to.
I raised my hand and I opposed to mine, but I was on mute and my video was on.
You are not allowed to oppose yourself.
Well, we will, we will make sure that the record shows that there was one nay vote for Elena Marler as parent representative at large.
Yes, because it was her, it was her herself.
Thank you, everybody, for bearing with us through some little parliamentary procedure there. And thanks to all of the committee chairs and the parent representatives at large. You know, this is, we were, as conversation we're having as a board earlier this afternoon. And after yesterday's, after yesterday's open house, meet the teacher night. You know, this, this group really is a great example of the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. And we couldn't do half of what we do without the people in this room, without the people heading up committees, without the representatives. And without the people that love to do things behind the scenes without having their name called out during a meeting and without being put down on an agenda. You know, just as, as the president, I want to make sure I express my gratitude and my thanks to everybody who's involved with the PTA. No matter how big or how little your role is, it is seen and it is appreciated. Moving on to committee updates, I'm going to send it over to Dominique for an update on the treasurer's report.
Okay, so, full disclosure, I had a little freak out earlier today about making sure our budget was good because we had a lot of checks that we wrote at the end of last fiscal term that didn't get cashed. But it all, QuickBooks seemed to understand the assignment, so we're good. There is one change that I'd like to propose to our budget, and that is to create a new line item for Ham Jam's income. That was not originally on the budget that we voted in at our last meeting. So that's really the only action item I have for us. Other updates, our current bank account sits at fifty thousand, seven hundred and forty one dollars and eighty-two cents. And the only other thing which is pertinent for, I think, just about everybody in here is that we do have a new reimbursement form. This year, it should make it a little easier to understand the difference between what you're purchasing and what line item it comes out of. And there's also a new line for you to check and include your cell phone number if you would like a text when your check is ready to be picked up or if it gets dropped in the mail. So that way we can all keep track of everything and you can have some comfort in knowing I have tracked down someone to sign the check for you so I can get it to you. Any questions?
For everyone, for anyone on the call that doesn't know what Ham Jams is, there, I'll put a link in the chat. And it is a fundraiser, we've had one other one in May of two thousand and twenty-three. And we were able to raise about seventy-seven thousand dollars for the school. To fund teachers' needs through the end of two thousand and twenty-four. And we are having another one, if you're a big Hamilton on Broadway fan. The Hamilton from Broadway, Miguel, I'm gonna mess up, Servantes, Servantes. He will be there with the musical director from Hamilton, doing a little fun mix of music and witty banter, and he'll be over here at Goldie's in the Lowso area. So that is what Dominique is talking about.
Is anybody, if you weren't familiar, last year it was, didn't go through PTA. That wasn't a part of our budget last year, that money went to the school. This year, because the school last year had a lot of red tape in using those funds, this year the PTA has been called up as the Calvary to help manage and spend that money.
So this is the, this is the information here on the PTA website on the link that Sherry, that Sherry included on the, in the chat. And Dominique, do you want to go ahead and vote on adding this, this line item here?
So since there's no questions, I move to add a income line for the Ham Jams fundraiser.
I second.
All in favor of adding a income line item to this year's budget for Ham Jams?
Aye.
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 Any question, or excuse me, any, any opposed? The motion passes, we will, Dominique, please go ahead and add an income line for Ham Jams this year.
Will do.
Alright, next up, I'm going to send it over to Pamela, our volunteer coordinator, to talk to us about some volunteer needs. You're on Meet Pamela.
Thank you for that. So welcome, all parents returning and new, glad that you are taking the time to join us on this first kickoff call for the PTA. There are, there's a newsletter, I think that's a really good entryway or group me to get all the information, but really you want to, we encourage you to consider a variety of volunteering opportunities throughout the school year. There are a couple listed there that are coming up, I think like the red carpet welcome, for example, that is on a specific date, Friday morning, August thirtieth, oh, thanks so much, Danny. Where we would just love a cheering crowd to help welcome the kindergarten students into their classrooms. So I'm kind of leading the charge on that and put a little note in the newsletter and on Group Me, seeking any sort of volunteers, any amount of time you can donate to cheering them would be great. There are also other year-rounds, ongoing volunteer opportunities on campus. There are things like Helping Hands on Friday mornings. The lunchtime cafeteria help, Dad's on Duty is a favorite of kids on Friday morning when they arrive to school. So we have a variety of signup geniuses located, and you can find them even through this event page as well. If you go to that volunteer tab, maybe guide them, show, yeah, volunteer. That's another spot where actually you can read up and learn a little bit more about what these opportunities are about. If you really want to get crazy and start diving in this side, this section, you can. Adam Horticas, our wonderful webmaster parent, developed this, really with you in mind, like, just thinking if you want to, you have specific criteria of like what could work with your schedule to volunteer, he's kind of thought it through. These are the rolling opportunities, you can go straight there. So I encourage you to spend some time getting familiar with our webpage, I think it's a really great source. And we try to make it as easy as possible for you to like get it onto your calendar and, and, and sign up for these volunteer opportunities. That's another point, can you back up Danny, please? And show them the calendar, the events page, sorry, go to the events page, we try to, events, go to the events. Here we go. If you scroll down. Just want to highlight this, we try to communicate the subscribe to calendar, yes, super convenient, really. In one, couple of seconds, it can download it straight onto your computer and you have it set. And I think it changes, it updates in real time if anything should change in terms of event dates and logistics. Sherry, did you want to add anything more on that comment phrase, it's another great.
I, I admit to not subscribing to the calendar. I made Ross Glynn do it first so that I could see how annoying and intrusive it would be, and it's not at all, it's so wonderful. I, and so I downloaded it this year and, and I love it. And then I just want to quickly plug a couple of those rolling volunteer opportunities. Lunchtime volunteers, this is a really sweet time to be able to get to see your kid when they're eating lunch. Also, in the very beginning of the year, we need a ton of help because all those little kindergartners coming in, they don't know how to open their milk. They don't know how to open packaging that some of the cafeteria food or even that mom and dad may have packed, they can't always get into it.
All their lunch numbers?
They don't know their lunch numbers, and that one later.
They don't know the procedure.
It goes on and on, later on in the year, it'll go down to like two people for for both lunchtime shifts, but like in the beginning, we need six, really twelve people each every day, six for each shift. It is really, it's really cute. Also, I have to plug Collins Wood Dads, we started that last year as a way to get some more positive masculine energy on campus. It is on Friday mornings before, like during carpool, eight forty-five to nine fifteen, so very simple, if your husband's, grandfather's, uncle, dear friend, whatever, cool people show up, they go into the office. Yes, everyone must be a registered CMS volunteer, and we will be pushing that in every single communication. Please have them come in the morning, it's so fun, they just, they're either in the back bus lot, greeting kids getting off the bus, going into the school, or they're out front and helping to open the car doors, the teachers really are relieved when the dads show up, it gives them, some of them, a little more time to go back to the classroom and prepare for the day. It's very cool. I just want to point out that Robert Koch and Danny Torres like did almost every week last week, and it was amazing, and lots of other dads intermixed in there too, just depending on their schedules. So love it, it's coming back. Helping Hands, Elena and I run that, it's fabulous, every Friday morning, the time on there is like the first couple hours of school. It could, like, we probably stay longer just because we like being there, but you do not have to. We're stapling papers.
Give five minutes if that's all you have to give, we will accept anytime.
It's true. We're just helping the teachers, stapling, copying, putting together booklets, doing random stuff too, it's, it's pretty fun. But everybody, 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 go to the link in the chat right now that says cmsvolunteers.com if you haven't done it. And even if you're listening to me and you're like, Sherry, shut up, I'm not freaking volunteering, I'm busy AF, I'm never going to volunteer. I have one more reason why you should go to cmsvolunteers.com right now, and that is because it is going to ease your pain when inevitably you do decide to come to the school for something. You're, e- even if it's not to volunteer, we might have a special event, maybe they're a Jaguar of the quarter.
If you want a chaperone during field trips, you need this to MS volunteer as well.
Yes, it will ease your access into the building itself. And admins really wanted me to push that and make that be known, so sign up yourself, make your wife, husbands. And sign up, just sign up, let's do it.
One other, one other important note about the CMS volunteers, it has to be renewed, has to be renewed every single year. So even if you were a volunteer in the past, make sure you log in again and renew it for this school year. Assuming nothing has changed as far as your address or contact information, it really is just logging in and, and clicking the renew button, and it happens right away. Definitely don't wait until the morning of that you're going to volunteer, because it sometimes takes twenty-four hours for it to come through the system and you, and allow you to log in via the lobby guard. Alright, anything else regarding volunteers, volunteers or volunteer needs? Alrighty, thank you Pamela, thank you Sherry. Next up, I'm going to go ahead and flip this over to Robert to talk to us about fundraising.
Thanks Danny, can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Excellent, well, I'll make this short and sweet, y'all, my name's Robert Koch, I'm the parent of now two students, soon to be three in a couple of years. And I'm a fundraiser by trade, and so I raised my hand a couple of years ago to help out with fundraising for the PTA. We do a very condensed two-week fundraising campaign each fall for undesignated funds, the undesignated supports. So that is the highest priority for this organization and for our community. As you all know, one of the things that we love about the Collins Wood community is that is a diverse place, not only ethnically diverse, but socio-economically diverse. So the thing that I love to say when I get a chance to speak with, with families and, you know, with participants here is that A, thank you to everyone who's on this call, who has given of their time or their financial resources. And know that every single gift to the Collins Wood PTA makes the difference. It could be a ten dollar gift, it can be a hundred dollar gift, it could be a thousand dollar gift. It does not matter the amount, the ask that I make is that, you know, I fully respect for, for people who are involved in giving to multiple organizations across Charlotte or across the country. I don't necessarily need for your check or your gift or your credit card to Collins Wood PTA to be the largest one that you make every single year, but I do ask that is the most meaningful. And so I know that it means a lot for me to dedicate my time and to make a gift to this organization every single year, and I hope that everyone will experience the joy of that with me. Our, our campaign this year, last year it was in October, this year it's a goal of fifty thousand dollars, and it's going to go from September fifteenth through September twenty seventh. I guarantee you that you will not miss the opportunity to participate and, and make an impact with that campaign. But in the interim, I will make sure to post a link in the chat. Every day is a good day to give to Collins Wood PTA, but we will make sure that you do not forget about it there in the middle of September. But thank you, everyone who gives of their time as volunteers, thank you to everyone who gives of their financial support as donors. And excited to have another really impactful year for this organization, so thank you again Danny, take it away.
Alrighty, thank you Robert. Any questions from the group regarding any of the committee updates? Alrighty, jumping back as promised, we're going to take a look and review the meeting minutes from our, from our last meeting, which was May fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Can't believe it was that long ago, but just a quick review of the meeting minutes here. We held our two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five PTA officer elections hosted by Ms. Naomi Bautista. Went through the voting process and we presented the slate of nominees. Everybody ran uncontested and were voted, and we were all voted into place. For shoutouts and wins, we celebrated the Kindergarteners Beginners Night, Staff Appreciation Week, the Junta's Jaguar from, from May fifth. We talked about the K through one courtyards and some of the, some of the current, or some of the changes that have been made at the time, the new equipment, the new sports equipment and just general fun, fun things that we were able to provide for those courtyards as well as some of the things that we had planned kind of longer term to get installed in this courtyard for the kindergartners and first graders. We also celebrated the Sky Zone event, which was a hopping good time. Then we also talked about campus beautification and Ross and a team of Eagle Scouts doing their handiwork in the garden and getting some trees up in, in and around the, the school campus. We reviewed April's meeting minutes. We also reviewed the treasurer's report provided by Dominique. We, we voted on and approved a couple reallocations of unused funds. One was from professional development to innovation grants, and then one from field trips that we then split between indoor and outdoor beautification. Both of those reallocations passed without any opposition. We also reviewed and approved the budget as presented by Dominique for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. And last but not least, our various, various committee head updates. We heard from Jamie Clifton regarding the, regarding staff appreciation and the muffin cart, I can't remember the punny name that she used. Spiritware update from Atlanta with the online merch store. We had an update regarding Invest from Robert Koch and talking about some of our new, our new business sponsorship packages, which are still up and running. So feel free to check out the CollinswoodPTA.com/business website for more information or email Robert directly.
Danny, pause. Can we tell everyone to hop back on in twenty seconds when this time?
I already took care of it, behind the scenes, don't worry about it.
Oh my gosh, that's why you're the president, Al Efe, way to go, okay.
Shout out to, shout out to Pamela for the, for the login assistance behind the scenes. Multiple monitors, I, I recommend it. Continuing on with the meeting minute reviews, we had an SIT or School Improvement Team, a short presentation explaining of kind of what that was, what its purpose is, and how it is kind of a, it's separate from, is separate from the PTA, but it's kind of a complement to the work that the PTA does. Ms. Modine shared some more information with us regarding the traffic updates on Tylerla Road and some of the findings from the city government and from police officers. And we called out the May and June up, or May and June events to close out the school year. And then we said, see you later, bye. Any questions about the meeting minutes, any notes, any inconsistencies that anybody has noticed? Alrighty, I would like to make a motion that we approve the May fourteen meeting minutes as written.
I second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes approved. Alright, and then, well, last item agenda here, some upcoming events. You, another shout out to, just because it's worth resharing, because it makes life so much easier, the events. The events page, um, if you don't want to, if you don't want to subscribe to the calendar, if you don't want it cluttering up your, your own personal calendar, because there's twenty-seven million things on it per day like mine does, you can always bookmark this page and check the calendar regularly. We do have functionality that this will list it out, instead of a month view, you can just see a list view. Pro tip, you can print this out and slap it on the family calendar or slap it on the refrigerator or paste it on your bathroom mirror if you'd like to make sure that it is in your face and you don't miss any fun things.
No, it's best to just subscribe, it tells you all the, all the early release days. It gives you all the information, so when you're, when you're making an appointment, it, you have all the information right there.
Hundred percent agree, but I'd like to make sure-
Subscribe, everybody should subscribe.
You know, in, in Casa de Torres, we like options, so I want to make sure that I offer options to everybody. So, you know, highlighting some, uh, some of the upcoming events. Um, Saturday morning, if you have a kindergartner or a rising kindergartner or a first grader, come out and play, meet the new families, mingle. For the first grade families, help those kindergartners with the, uh, kindergarten kids and parents with those first day of school jitters, kind of meet some of the new families coming into, uh, coming into Collinswood. Um, for those of us with older kids, come hang out, help us sling some cookies and some bottles of water and, you know, watch the kiddos, uh, run around and have fun, again, kind of mingle with everybody. Uh, first day of school is obviously next Monday. Um, on Thursday, when, for any kindergartner parents, uh, we do have the staggered entry on those first days. Be sure to check the school website for information about when your child is supposed to go to school for those first couple days. And then Thursday, there's gonna be the kindergarten meet the teacher event. On Friday, the, uh, event formerly known as the sip and sob, the parent, kindergarten parent coffee. You know, that, that first full day of school for all kindergartners. You know, great chance for kindergarten parents and families to get together after carpool. Um, you know, share a cup of coffee, sob on each other's shoulders, or just really, you know, get to know each other. Um, for parents who are available and looking for a good cup of coffee over at Sumac Coffee, you can hang out, introduce yourselves, and again mingle with some of our, some of our new, um, our new kindergarten families and our new Jaguar families. The last one I'll call out, September tenth will be our first official general PTA meeting. That one will be hybrid, will be, uh, I'll be hanging out in the media center, come hang out with me. We'll also, uh, stream it on Zoom as well.
Hey, I have to add something. The, there might be some Parent Square information that should be corrected this week, but last week said that we were having the coffee at Madison Perk. Um, it is not their fault, it was a last minute change because Madison Perk closed. It was supposed to undergo new ownership, but something fell through. Um, but we love Sumac and, uh, happy to support them.
Pamela, you have a question?
Uh, yes, just if you wouldn't mind showing your screen again, there's one more event that I think could be relevant for a lot of the folks here. The K three playdate.
That's right, me, there we go.
I'm one who plans probably a week out, but there might be parents who would appreciate maybe kind of having a four week view. Yeah, um, and so it's a really great event that we host as a PTA. Um, always could use some volunteers there too, but it's, the primary audience is K through three families, um, to just come have a fun neighborhood playdate at Park Road Park. Um, and the time I think is written there, yeah, oh, it's highlighted, four thirty, it's after school, yeah.
Yep, right after school.
Yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, everyone, that's it for the written agenda. As always, we like to open it up for questions, concerns, anything else somebody would like to bring to the, uh, bring to the, the group today. All right, silence is golden. Um, Sherry and I will be hanging around for a little while longer to answer some questions and, uh, do a walkthrough of the PTA website for the kindergartners and some new families. So if you'd like to hang out with us, you're welcome to, if not, have a fantastic Thursday. I will see everybody for Monday morning chaos, and you will definitely see me at Dad's on Duty on, uh, next Friday. Thanks for, thanks for coming over, I would like to officially motion that we end the meeting.
I second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, everybody, have a great night, thank you so much.
I will un-